Selectmen's meeting, do we have announcements? I think you have an announcement, Selectman Daley.
Yes.
Is that this Saturday?
This Saturday. I'm doing Dancing with the Stars. I'm fundraising on behalf of a program at the Senior Center, which will be an Alzheimer's Respite Care Program, which, and I see in the audience Mr. Batolo, who is one of the fellow dancers. And I know I've been working very hard, both on the fundraising end and on the dancing end, but I'm-
So which are you doing better at? The fundraising or the dancing?
Yeah. That's a tough question.[41.22][41.22](Laughter). Let's, I will say that my goal is not to be the worst dancer. That's my, my simple goal in life, is to not be the worst one. So I think that, I don't, I don't know how the others are doing, but I, I think I'm doing well enough that I probably won't embarrass all of you.
I have three announcements. I just want to remind people that tomorrow evening, there's a meeting in this room on the Carlton Street Footbridge, which is a project that town meeting has taken up several times, part of the larger Muddy River Restoration Project. And MassDOT will be coming here to Brookline to take some comments about the Carlton Street Footbridge and the plan design and just sort of lay out the, the final plan for, for the bridge renovation and restoration. So that, that hearing takes place here in the Selectmen's Hearing Room tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM. And again, it's a MassDOT, it's a state hearing.
Yeah, we, we should say in, in reference to that project, that I believe the Army Corps of Engineers did get funding for the dredging part of the project, Phase Two, but has not gotten funding for the environmental restoration part of the project. So it's a little bit, that portion is certainly in limbo.
And I believe the previous iteration of this board is on record urging the federal government to provide that, that additional environmental funding. And we wrote a letter to the President saying that we wanted the money. It shocks me that, that President Obama hasn't heeded the demands of the Brookline Board of Selectmen, but nonetheless, we are still looking for the funding. You are correct.
I'll give him a call.
Yeah. I think we dressed up like the Pope.
I also wanted to again congratulate Frank and Carol Carrow, who were honored last week at a Senior Center event. They sort of Autumn Senior Center Benefit. They were honored for their work founding Brookline Can, a great organization which advocates for older Brookline residents being able to remain in the community, remain in their homes, and be vibrant and active participants. I know several of us were there. And also, on the same evening was, was a Route Nine conversation that took place downstairs. The town has partnered with MIT, a class at MIT, to do some visioning work on the Route Nine corridor between Brookline Avenue and Cypress Street. An active corridor of the town. A number of projects are going on there now, the Red Cab and Brookline Place, and some other things in the pipeline, Gateway East. But we continue to think about it as a community, how we can activate that, that stretch of roadway, make it more pedestrian friendly and less of a, an impediment to cross, need neighborhoods together. So there was a conversation last week. I think some great results came out of it, and that, that conversation's going to continue in the weeks and months ahead. So stay tuned and please engage if you, you weren't at last week's session.
Right. And there's also a project being proposed at the corner of Cypress and Route Nine. It's an expansion of the Audi dealership. So that, there's actually a planning board hearing on that this Thursday. I'll mention that the public process, the public comment period for the school site study is open. And tonight, there's an open house at the Denny Room across the street from Town Hall, currently going on until nine o'clock. We all just came from that. And, and there's going to be another open house on the 12th, which is next, what, Thursday?
Next Thursday.
Thursday, in the morning, 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM.
Here at Town Hall.
Here at Town Hall, in the school committee room, which I think will be a better room than the Denny Room.
What time is it?
7:00 AM.
Okay.
To 9:00 AM, to catch the morning crowd. And then there's going to be a public hearing in this room on the 3rd of December. I forget the time, maybe 7:00 or 7:30. Well, as the time gets closer, we'll certainly announce a more concrete time. And then next, on the 11th, which is next Wednesday, there'll be a Veterans Day commemoration in front of Town Hall at, I believe, 11:00.
11:00.
So those are the things that are going on. Anyone else have anything? So let's move on.
11:00 on Wednesday.
The 11th.
The 11th, right.
Right, in front of Town Hall.
11:00, 11:00 day, 11:00 hour.
Right. Okay, moving on to our miscellaneous calendar. We have minutes for October 22nd and October 27th. Any changes?
I did give Kate some on the 27th, I think.
I had some edits to the 27th as well.
Okay. Can I take both of them in one motion? Does anyone need to abstain?
Sure.
Okay. So I'll move acceptance of the minutes as amended for both October 22nd and October 27th. All those in favor, Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
And just for clarification, that was as amended.
As amended.
As amended.
Right?
Yes, I meant as amended. The open house took a lot out of me.
I just, I just realized I have a devotion school meeting scheduled for 8:00 to 10:00 that morning. So I'm guessing you want me to cancel that meeting, or?
No.
Or schedule it, or?
No.
Okay.
Well, that's up to you. We can talk offline.
Well, I'm the chairman of that committee, so.
No, I don't think so.
I have to be there if they're going to have a meeting, but I could maybe move it.
Right. We'll talk.
Okay.
We'll talk offline. Okay. The question of awarding, B, question of awarding and executing a contract for the Beacon Street tree fence repairs in the amount of $32,400 with DeAngelis Ironwork, Inc. of Easton. Mr. Ditto, what's happening?
Good evening. This contract is for repair of the cast iron tree fences that are in our commercial areas on Beacon Street. If you can believe it, it's been 10 years since these have been put in place.
Wow.
Are these in the center, near the T, are these near the T stops?
They're in the three commercial areas, Lower Beacon Street, St. Mary's, Coolidge Corner, Washington Square. We solicited three proposals. DeAngelis was the low bidder. This is an hourly rate contract. Their rate was $2,500 an hour. The second bidder was Cassidy Brothers at $2,750 an hour. And Village Forge was third at $2,750 also. So they were the very tight bids. We anticipate starting at Washington Square, because that's the most area that needs the most improvement, then work our way down through Coolidge Corner and then St. Mary's Street. We have allocated 10 working days to do the work. DeAngelis feels that he can do that with, after reviewing the scope of work, he can do that within that time period. We will start right away if this is approved tonight.
And to Selectman Daley's point, these tree fences are around the tree pits in the sidewalk.
Correct.
Yeah. Any questions, comments? Okay, therefore, I'll move the awarding and execution of the contract for the Beacon Street tree fence repairs in the amount of $32,400 with DeAngelis Ironwork, Inc. of Easton. All those in favors, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ditto. Next item is, two items related to some legal documents with respect to the devotion school and the legal documents where we would agree to certain conditions to get reimbursed by the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Ms. Goff, tell us what's happening.
So I had previously been in front of you with the project scope and budget agreement. This is the project funding agreement. This agreement is the next milestone in the MSBA process, which basically will allow us to start submitting for reimbursement and drawing down money from this grant. The second document, now that Dr. DeLupini has left the district, we're just updating the membership of the school building committee, so we would need the board to vote on that. We'll send all this documentation to the MSBA.
Okay. Questions?
Yeah, no, just to, just to give you a brief update, I think things are coming along well. A number of people, many of whom are on the devotion building committee, but some others from the planning board, joined together to form the design advisory group and worked with the architects. And I think people are feeling a little more comfortable with the design. And so it is, it's, it's all coming together and we're moving along. We had some issues which were, are still under discussion about what kind of field to put out there. And so we're, we're still hashing that, that part out.
So when does the first shovel hit the ground?
That is supposed to be, I think it's, well, I think demolition was, is supposed to start this summer, right?
I think, I forget the specifics.
It's 2016, so this summer is, would be the beginning of the demolition. So I, I don't, do you count that as the shovel hitting the ground?
Sure.
Okay.
That's, that's when we're seeing the first construction activity.
Yeah, yeah.
Which is, I guess, what I kind of meant.
Yeah. Well, they're trying to, you know, naturally, trying to use the summers to bracket the time period, so that the, the kids are out of the school for, the anticipated time is two years, but hopefully it will, it will be no more than that.
Any questions?
I'm wondering if somebody can just remind me what the funding percentage that the MSBA gave us is.
Well, it, we don't know exactly yet.
We won't know until the project completes, because as items become, if they become deemed ineligible, they don't get factored into the overall cost. So we won't know the final percentage until-
We think it's around 27, 28.
A little bit less than that.
Yeah, there's a stated percentage, but, but then you have to-
You've got to submit the bills and-
Sort of like a tax rate. It's only one part of the equation, yeah.
Right. And but we do know that there is a maximum.
Yes.
Which is in the 25 or $6 million range?
26.9 is in the document here, but obviously it may be less based, because we already know that there is a piece of the project that won't be eligible for reimbursement.
Right. Yeah. Okay, so I'm going to move that we approve and authorize the town administrator to execute the Edward Devotion School project funding agreement with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. All those in favor, Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to have to abstain. I work for the State Treasurer's Office, and the State Treasurer is the chairman of the MSBA. I don't believe that that poses a conflict under the state ethics law, but I need a written opinion to that effect before I can take any action with respect to the MSBA.
So out of an abundance of caution.
Out of an abundance of caution.
You abstain.
Okay.
And the chair votes aye. We have a quorum, so we've, we've authorized the town administrator to so sign his name. I'll also move that we approve and authorize the chair to execute the MSBA letter updating the membership of the devotion school project committee. All those in favor, say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Again, abstain.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Ms. Goff. And lastly, on our miscellaneous calendar, we have the question of approving the application of Anna Olivia Corporation DBA O'Leary's holder of an all-kind alcoholic beverages license as a common victualler at 1010 Beacon Street for the appointment of Grain O'Leary as-
No, it's Granya.
Granya, okay. I'm, okay, O'Leary, I apologize to Ms. O'Leary, as an alternate manager. I presume there's no one here to speak to that. These tend to be pretty straightforward.
We should note that the police department reviewed the materials and sees no reason to deny the appointment of Ms. O'Leary as an alternate manager.
Right. Any questions, comments? Therefore, I'll move that we approve the application of Anna Olivia Corporation doing business as O'Leary's holder of an all-kind vituallers, all-kind alcoholic beverage license as a common victualler at 1010 Beacon Street for the appointment of-
Granya O'Leary.
Thank you, as an alternate manager. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye, and I'd like to mention that O'Leary's, where I've eaten a few times, is a well-known and loved establishment in Precinct One, and it's been open since 1992. I really applaud them as an important establishment in this town. They serve good liquor.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, moving on to our main calendar, we're talking about warrant articles. So the first one is a reconsideration of Article 14. And this is a resolution, one of the petitioners is in the room, and it's really a, a technical change made by the advisory committee to some of the technical language, where it recognizes that there, there could be penalties if, if someone decides to opt out after six months. But in another part of the resolution, in, in the part of the resolution that counts, it, it charges us with, with trying to negotiate a contract where there would be no penalty or other costs. So this is just a technical change to recognize that if we didn't, if we weren't careful in our negotiation, there could be costs to the, to the folks, the consumer. Thank you, Ms. Heller.
Well, I mean, I, I think the petitioners already suggested this to us, but I-
Correct.
I guess it's, doesn't, there's no harm in having it written in here.
Right. And I would suggest that the advisory committee's language is technically correct. They tend to be very careful when it comes to this kind of stuff. And I would advocate the-
What was the change to the whereas?
It's in the, the sixth whereas. It, it read something to, it read something like, whereas community choice aggregation also provides a layer of consumer protection, because plans are reviewed by both the Mass Attorney General's Office and the Massachusetts Department of Utilities. And then there was a phrase in the original language, and there would be, something to the effect that there would be no cost to the consumer to opt out.
Oh.
There could be circumstances where there could be costs to the consumer to opt out. But then in the therefore resolved part of the resolution, we're instructed to try and negotiate an aggregation agreement where there is no penalty for opting out. So we will try to do that. We'll instruct our broker that when they go to the market, that that be a, a piece of, of the puzzle.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
If we negotiate, when we negotiate that, and when we're working on that, does that have any impact on the cost of the basic rate that we would pay, or the, the amount of renewables that we would?
Tommy Batolo, town meeting member, Precinct Six, and petitioner. I spoke with the DPU about this issue in particular, and confirmed that in fact, the only way there can be in fee for opting out after six months is if the selectmen sign a contract that explicitly permits it. Other communities have, I dare not say universally, but the woman I spoke with said she is not aware of a single community that does have an opt-out fee after six months. That all the other communities have been able to secure contracts where there's no fee for opting out, ever. You know, with every contract, you push in here, it pokes out there. And so I won't, I can't assure you that it will have no impact on price, but given that every other community has, in the opportunity to weigh that balance, chosen the consumer protection of indefinite free opt-out, I don't suspect the difference is very large, especially because as more and more communities have pursued community choice aggregation, the aggregators have a really good feel for what percentage of customers will opt out. And so they can procure in contract the right amount of resources, even if they don't have a fee to, to try to keep the customers in.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, discussion? So I will move that first we reconsider our vote on Article 14. And once we take that vote, I will move then the advisory committee's language. So first is the motion to reconsider. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Now I'll move to accept the advisory committee's language. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
On the calendar is possible reconsideration of Article 18. And that's brought up by two circumstances that I'd like the, the board to at least think about. First, the advisory committee came up with alternate language for the resolution, which I believe is in our packets. So we should consider whether we wish to agree with that language. And also, Ms. Carrera had some, there was some miscommunication about whether Ms. Carrera had agreed to some of the language last week. Now, we, we should recognize too, that this is a non-binding resolution, and, and the town's official policy will of course comply with, with all applicable laws and regulations. This is, this is a statement of, of, of what we want the town's policies to aspire to, certainly. And then that would have to be massaged into the official policy language. So I don't, I don't know if, you know, Ms. Carrera's language had a clause at the end of the, now therefore be it resolved. Okay, so what we, what we had agreed to was, now therefore be it resolved, that town of Brookline is committed to achieving the goal of having all town departments at all employment grade levels reflect the racial diversity of Metro Boston, as it seeks a diverse school, a pool of, of available workers. And then here was her additional phrase, without discriminating on the basis of a protected class.
I'd like to move that we not reconsider warrant Article 18, and motivate that right now. I'm sorry.
I actually would like to see the language that Ms. Carrera suggested adopted. I think it, it strengthens the resolution. I think it gives a nod to the fact that there are many types of diversity in the town, while still preserving the fact that the resolution is mostly about seeking to, to promote racial diversity. I think it, it actually makes it stronger by making it more encompassing.
Yeah. I think it makes it weaker. The resolution really is about improving data collection. And the clause proposed sort of goes without saying. I mean, saying you shall not, you shall not do something illegal. I think that that goes without saying, and it's sort of not, you know, in line with the intention of this warrant article. There's no intention to adopt protected class hiring in the warrant article. And I think it's just surplusage that sends a bad message, that, you know, we're, you know, interested in increasing diversity, but we really are fearful of what someone could consider that to be. And therefore, we're going to just fearfully say that we're not, of course, we're not discriminating. But I mean, no one's, you know, suggesting that we are.
I think, I think the, you know, I said when we first passed this, that I was a little concerned that it was trying to, trying to advantage certain of Brookline's protected classes and not others. You know, I, I mean, I, I would have been happier if we'd said all the Brookline protected classes, because there was a, an article in the Globe just recently about how handicapped people have trouble even getting interviews, let alone jobs, anyplace. So, but I'm not, I'm trying to see if that, I'm not sure whether this language speaks directly to the other protected classes, or, or whether, whether this language is meant to say, we're not discriminating to, to promote racial diversity on the basis of a protected class. I'm not, I'm just looking for a little clarification maybe from Ms. Carrera about what this language was trying to get at.
Good evening, everyone. Patty Carras, in Town Council's office. So the language was simply, it was simply a clarification. I'm not saying that it's necessary. This is a non-binding resolution, but it was simply to, I suggested it because when the goal was to, it stated, the resolution states a goal of increasing diversity, which could, through hiring. And so was there, would it be helpful to have clarification that you, there's a line, and you can't do that by crossing the line, into protected class-based decision-making? So that was the intent of the suggestion.
Okay, so I think what you're trying to get at is not, you're saying, we're not discriminating against the white guy, because we're picking the person of color. Is that?
It was simply directed at the line regarding-
Okay.
-does not protect-
So it doesn't, it doesn't get to my goal, really, of trying to say the other people who are in the protected classes need some consideration.
Doesn't the warrant article talk about annual data reports generally? I mean, it's not just, you know, one type of data report. I mean, it's annual data reports with respect to, you know, hiring, I guess, you know, the pool of workers that are looked at?
You, you may want to look at Selectman Daley, the advisory committee's language, which is perhaps a, a little broader. That might be more of what you were thinking of.
Well, I mean, the advisory committee is also speaking of racial diversity, so they're not really getting to the-
No, they're saying, therefore be it resolved, that the town of Brookline is committed to seeking a diverse pool of available workers, as it moves towards increasing the goal of racial diversity in all town department, yeah, at all employment levels.
I mean, you know, this warrant article is about increasing racial diversity. I mean, it's really not about other things. I mean, it doesn't preclude, you know, other types of diversity. But I think, you know, the purpose of the warrant article was racial diversity, and I'm not sure that changing it beyond that-
Yeah, I, I mean, that is the purpose.
...would be acceptable for-
That is the purpose of the article. I, I wish that, I, I think it's unfortunate that they're not reaching out to the other protected classes.
Yeah, I don't think it precludes reaching out to the other protected classes. I mean, we're, we're saying that, as a matter of fact, our Diversity, Inclusion, and Human Relations Commission is, is- Commission is, has as a mission to reach out to all so-called Brookline protected classes and to everyone in general to include them in the community. And I think that it will be a force that would inform the Human Relations Department or Human Resources Department of ways in which we can reach out to the handicapped, to other sectors of population who, you know, are not represented in our, represented in our workforce.
Right, but I think that the fact that the resolution is specific to one type of protected class and doesn't acknowledge that there are others could give the mistaken impression that we value one, one group over others. But I respect the fact that this is a resolution exclusively regarding racial diversity. I joined Selectman Daley in thinking it's unfortunate that it doesn't, it's not all-encompassing, it doesn't acknowledge other types of diversity. But I think we need to decide whether we want to go with the advisory committee language or not.
Or stay where we are.
Stay where we are. I'm, you know, articulated my point, but I'm not going to follow my sword for this one.
I do think though, to Selectman Green's point of not wanting us to reconsider, I think we should reconsider it because then if we revote the language you prefer, that makes a positive statement to town meeting versus the advisory committee came up with their language later and we just didn't reconsider. So then people don't know if we, well--
If we revote the town advisory committee's language, that's making a positive statement with respect to that.
Yeah, it seems to me if--
Okay.
Yeah. Selectman Heller's been patient.
I think I heard Ms. Carrera say that her language wasn't, the effect, it's not mandatory that we put it in. Is that what I understood you to say? That it doesn't, that the resolution and the goal of it doesn't fail if we don't put them--
It was a suggestion. I think it would be more important at the actual policymaking stage to have language like that in it.
Okay. Thank you.
Right, and--
That's for sure, reason not to reconsider, but to me.
Right. And to me, the resolution is a statement of town meeting of a policy direction. And we will have to work and make sure that whatever policy that comes out of this meets the legal requirements. And we will. So--
Yeah, I'm not sure what the advisory committee version does for you, that the original version doesn't--
Well, what it does, it takes out the reference to Metro Boston.
Right, that's the--
And, you know, I think that that's an important inclusion because it's like--
Oh, it has a Metro Boston, right?
But not in the first, whereas, or there's--
Yeah, the rationale there was it's throwing in the hint of a quota. That's, I think that's kind of what they were saying. Some folks were saying.
I think that our language actually speaks better to your concern, Selectman Daley, because it includes a reference to seeking a diverse pool of available workers.
Right. I think between ours and theirs, I'm willing to stick with ours.
Yeah, I am too. So I don't see a motion to reconsider, so we won't. Unless somebody objects, then, okay, then we're done.
Moving on to a, an article we haven't, well, we've heard about, but we haven't formally considered. That's Article 3, the Budget Amendments. Ms. Goff?
Good evening. When last we reviewed Article 3, we had presented the Town Administrator's Recommendations for the Additional State Aid. At the time, I was still waiting for some group health numbers to settle on the school side so that we could present a final vote review. And in between that time, the advisory committee has also taken up this Warren article and they've also made a recommendation. So if you turn to page 3-4 of your combined reports, there's a table there that provides a summary of the recommendations on state aid. $20,000 going to the Diversity Inclusion and Community Relations Department. $100,000 being transferred from the school appropriation to the Building Department's School Plant Program for school buildings. $94,000 to deal with the forestry truck issue at the DPW. $72,917 for collective bargaining. A deduction of $374,286, which is a combination of the group health adjustment and the previously mentioned Building Department adjustment. And if you turn to the tables attached, this should be in your packet, it kind of summarizes all the changes that are needed for the additional state aid. And also part of the advisory committee vote was an adjustment for the water and sewer budget. That's on 3-5 of the combined reports. And then also there is language changes that are needed specifically related to the school plant program within the Building Department.
So in the recommended vote, the new money is the $20,000 to the Diversity Inclusion and Community Relations Department, $94,000 to Public Works for the truck, and then $72,917 to collective bargaining reserve.
Correct. The original recommendation of the Town Administrator, yes.
Right. Any comments, questions? I think this is pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Okay, so I will therefore move a recommendation of favorable action on Article 3. And the advisory committee voted it, right?
They have voted, yes.
As voted by the advisory committee. All those in favor? You don't like when I say that. All those in favor--
We're not voting on it just because they voted on it.
No, I'm just making a note that--
My recommendation.
It's the Town Administrator's recommendation that the advisory committee has voted.
Okay.
It will be, since it's a money, it's a money, it's a budget article, it will be their motion, so please--
Okay. We'll fall in line. Aye.
Thank you, Selectman Daley. Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Falling in line, also aye. And as am I.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. Article 15 is the resolution on the Blue Ribbon Committee for Eminent Domain.
Yeah, I should note here that I heard from Town Council, as I believe Ms. Fraley did, that I was wrong. I don't know where I got my misunderstanding or misinformation, but a citizens committee could hold executive sessions.
Right. But to me, that doesn't change my view whether to do it at this point. I think, you know, we've, we've taken it upon ourselves to commission staff led by Selectman Heller to do a study that came out of the Article 18 of the last town meeting. That study should be available by the time, the next couple of weeks, right?
Yes.
We hope before town meeting, yes.
Right, before town meeting. So that will be before town meeting. You know, town meeting members will be able to see it and touch it and decide whether that's, does the job. So I don't think this is necessary, so my vote will be for no action.
I don't think it's necessary either, but I'm not going to vote no action. I'm going to abstain and let town meeting members make their own determination as to whether they feel it's necessary to do further investigation of this issue or not.
Yeah, I think I'll abstain as well. I don't care if they want to meet. I don't think we have, we've already put financial resources into it though. This is a town moderator and advisory committee. I don't know, you know, they would not have a budget available to them, but I don't think we should vote additional resources when we've already spent the money on this, although I will say I strongly urge those who are working on it to get that report out before town meeting so people can see what's there.
That would be interesting if we had four abstentions and one no action.
No, I will vote no action also. I don't think it's necessary. I think, you know, if town meeting wants to have another viewpoint of the report, then they'll vote for it, but I don't see that it is necessary. Inevitably, there'll be, have to be resources expended on it, and I don't think that that's a wise use of our limited funds at this point. So I would vote, I'll vote no action.
I will break the tie by also voting no action.
Okay. So I will therefore move no action on, no action recommendation on Article 15. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Abstain.
Selectman Franco?
Abstain.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Okay, so moving on to the next item on the agenda is a discussion on the process for reviewing the applications submitted by New England Treatment Access, Inc., NADA, for a registered marijuana dispensary at 160 Washington Street. Mr. Kleckner?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I ask to have this matter placed on the calendar this evening. As you know, there's been a long process going on at the state level prior to this that authorized various dispensaries or prospective dispensaries to allow them to seek licenses in the municipalities. And we have New England Treatment Access, which has been given a provisional license or permit by the Department of Public Health to seek a license here in Brookline. And that process has been going through a zoning process over the Zoning Board of Appeals. And just a couple of weeks ago, or I guess shortly, the Zoning Board of Appeals did vote to issue a special permit for this use. And although the decision hasn't been rendered yet, and of course, there is also an appeal period that will accrue, ensue. But at this point, New England Treatment Access has submitted their application for a license. This board previously adopted regulations that govern that. There is also a licensing review committee and advisory committee to this board that has identified some proposed conditions. But tonight, I think the idea is really to discuss the process and the timing of how we would go about hearing and considering this matter. I would suggest that if you are going to raise issues around the conditions, that you do so, you know, to let folks know, your colleagues and the public, what you are going to raise as issues or concerns, but that this board doesn't deliberate, certainly not vote on anything this evening. We haven't even begun the process. So with that, Patty Correa, our Associate Town Counsel, is here and can talk a little bit about the process if you would like, or we can just get right into it.
I think it would be good. This board really hasn't had the benefit of being involved in the licensing review committee. And the members that represented this board on that committee are no longer on the board, so we're kind of at a disadvantage. So what I'm going to ask Ms. Carrera to do is kind of give us an overview of the process, how they got here, and then we can talk a little on specifics. I know each of us has seen the draft conditions that have come out of that process. We, I think all of us have concerns. Though I do, I think it's important that we understand the context and the rationale that the licensing review committee used for some of the areas that we might be concerned about. And then once we hear how they got to a decision, you know, we can agree or disagree, but I think it's important we hear their rationale. So, Ms. Carrera.
Thank you. Patty Correa, First Assistant Town Counsel. So you have before you the proposed draft conditions by the licensing review committee to any license the board issues to NADA in connection with its application for an R&amp;D license from the board. The licensing review committee operated in an environment that was already extensively regulated, and its work acknowledges that regulatory framework. We have a state statute that was passed as a result of a referendum that had certain stipulations in it. Among them, that DPH would regulate these entities. We have a very lengthy, extensive, detailed regulatory scheme from DPH regarding myriad matters of the operations of RMDs. The town saw this potentially coming to fruition here, and several years in advance of it, began working on a local regulatory framework. And those provisions were the zoning bylaw, which town meeting passed in November of 2013. There were extensive discussions ahead of that regarding matters such as buffer zone around schools and so forth. There's Minutes and there's a record of all of those discussions, including a report to town meeting about the ultimate proposal to somewhat relax the buffer zone from the state default standard in the DPH regs. So we have that. And the zoning bylaw also provided for a requirement of a special permit. We have a licensing scheme that was also set up by town meeting in November of 2013 in anticipation of this very day. And that was provided by a bylaw. Also, the Police Department proposed extending our fingerprint-based background checks that we were doing for liquor licensees and others to this entity as well. Town meeting in 2013 set that up too. So we had a number of measures that had already been taken at the state level and locally in anticipation of our getting here today. The licensing review committee then tackled the RMD regulations, which set a basic framework with the idea that it would be the conditions that would really sort of get into the specifics of regulating this specific entity at the specific location. However, the regulations do provide a framework for there to be enforcement of the conditions and possible sanctions against the licensee in the event that the conditions are violated. So that all of this was sort of framing the conditions, which is where we are now. So to tell you a little bit about the process that led up to this draft, there were approximately four long meetings attended not only but by the licensing review committee, but by numerous staff from approximately four town departments. The initial meeting on the conditions occurred in December of 2014. And that was a meeting where various town departments brought their initial recommendations for conditions to the licensing review committee. Those departments were the Police Department, Superintendent Morgan is here tonight, Health Department, Planning Department, did I say Police? Legal. I believe those were the departments that came forth with initial recommendations. Over the next three meetings, January, February, and March of 2015, if I recall, there were lengthy discussions about the conditions. A number of matters were discussed, from signage to regulating edibles, to packaging, to, oh, myriad, myriad items were discussed. The licensing review committee held a public hearing on March 25th that lasted several hours long. The record of that is available online on the big website and also in Minutes. And in April, they voted the recommendation that you have before you, knowing that it was very much discussed. And on the forefront, that would be the selectmen, that would be the final decision makers. This was an advisory committee offering suggestions with, in collaboration with town departments. And I'd be happy to answer any questions about the background.
I think just, I'll say kind of a general statement of my approach to this. To us, I think this is a new kind of entity that we as a board and we as a town don't have experience with. And to me, that kind of means that we should be, be very cautious and err on the side of caution. And if-- And if, at least my approach is going to be, if I have a choice, one way or the other, I'm going to choose the more cautious of the options. And the applicant can always come back later and say, and show us their track record. And we've even used that approach for some of our alcohol licenses, where, for example, there was a recent alcohol license where they asked for a late closing time. We said, no, you can't have that late closing time now, but you can come back in six months or a year, show us your track record, and then we would grant that, we might consider granting the, a more liberal closing time. So, that's going to be my approach to this, and I would advocate to my colleagues that you have a similar approach. What I'd like to do, you know, this is really the first time in, that we're really looking at the draft conditions that have come out of the Licensing Review Committee. And in reading that, you know, I have a lot of questions, and I'm sure my colleagues have a bunch of questions. We have Ms. Correa here. So, I'd like to engage in a little discussion about some of those questions. And I guess, to me, we're kind of probing the process, the procedure. What's, what can we expect in terms of, you know, what's a reasonable kind of condition? And this would be a prelude to our public hearing, where we would hear folks from the public, from the applicant, on, you know, what folks think is reasonable. So, I'd like to start with my questions. So, the first question is, is it possible to provisionally, have a provisional license for a shorter period, and have the applicant come back after, after a period of time and show us their track record? Or do we have to issue at first a one-year license?
So, the bylaw that town law, town meeting passed was a one-year renewable license. So, the time for, so you could though, just set some conditions requiring the licensee to come back, not to renew the license within a one year, but simply to report back or to review certain items within the conditions.
Could we, the paradigm that we're issuing the license is that for a medical marijuana dispensary. And as many of our, as my colleagues may be aware, there's a move to put on the ballot, I think next year or the year after, a resolution to open the state up to recreational marijuana. Would it be possible to put a condition on here to make it clear that we're issuing this license under the medical paradigm, and that when the law changes and the applicant wishes to expand the distribution, the dispensary to recreational, that they would have to come back and get a new license, or renegotiate, or have the license expanded?
Well, I think, perhaps a mechanism that you're thinking of that would, that would work would be to include maybe perhaps some condition language stating explicitly that this license is for medical marijuana dispensing. And in the event of a change in the law, the conditions could be reviewed, something to that effect.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Would any recreational use of marijuana statute piggyback on the medical marijuana statute and regulations, or would they be completely separate?
They would be-
Yeah, I can't imagine that they would be-
They would be separate, yeah.
That it would even be an issue.
Well, to me, I would just want to make it explicit that, you know, we're issuing this with an understanding that this is, this is a medical marijuana dispensary, and if the law changes, you know, that's going to have big implications on the kind of traffic and the impact on the community. And I think we need to be able to consider that, not have it just be grandfathered in automatically.
I'd be very uncomfortable if it was grandfathered, if recreational was sort of grandfathered in or pigged out.
Yeah, but we don't know what the new law is going to say, you know.
We don't know if it's going to pass.
Correct. Another question I have is, we passed a law that requires a background check for the applicant, for the manager, the assistant manager, executives. What is the nature of that background check? Is it just a state background check, or is it broader?
So, at the initial application stage, under state law, federal law, and our local bylaw on fingerprint-based background checks, the initial background check of the individuals Chairman Moschinsky just enumerated, as indicated in the application, those are, that's going to be a national FBI database fingerprint-based background check. It's going to uncover any record nationally. After the initial application stage, because of the way the law was written, we would be not doing that as, not as extensive a background check after that. We wouldn't be able to utilize the FBI database for renewal-related background checks. Those would be state-based.
I'll turn it over to my board. I have some very specific questions, but I'll let some of the other folks-
Well, I have a number of, I certainly heard from many people after the Licensing Subcommittee went at this, that they weren't happy with the results. And I myself have a great many concerns about traffic and so forth. And so, I would like to propose the following changes, and in keeping with Chairman Moschinsky's idea that we go with the cautious approach here. So, I would like to adopt the appointment-only basis, and that we specify, I haven't figured out what the appropriate thing is, but a certain number of appointments in a single hour. And I would add that they would have one additional emergency appointment, if necessary, per hour. I would also add that our licensing group suggested that they offer home delivery to customers who had a hardship getting in. I would suggest that they offer home delivery to all customers. And I would like to say, I know that one town tried to limit the amount people could get, and the state said that was inappropriate, it was a conflict with the state law. But, so this is, this, I think, may comply with the state law. I would offer it up as that all customers may receive the maximum amount allowed under state law and their individual prescription by home delivery. Customers may only get a maximum of two ounces of medical marijuana products onsite with the balance to be delivered to them. But I think, and after talking with Attorney Correa, that we would have to add something like, except in cases of hardship about receiving home deliveries, individual customers could receive their entire prescription onsite. And I would, I would include the, how many people that they have to give the entire prescription to onsite in the reporting requirements. So, they would not give us individual customers' names or violate their, their right to confidentiality, but give us sort of the circumstances roughly, and the number of exceptions, so that we, so that it wasn't a case of them simply granting exceptions to everyone. I would also suggest-
Yeah, let me, what I would suggest, you continue going through some of these kinds of things. What I would suggest we do is we put these up on the website, and that it, we allow the public to comment on this. I'd also like to hear the applicants.
Okay. I would, I think they have proposed hours of operation of 10 to 7, seven days a week. I would allow the 10 to 7 Monday through Saturday, but say 12 noon to 5:00 p.m. on And then, in the labeling section, there's a, there's some requirements in the proposed conditions of the license about how they have to label the products going out the door. I would include a warning that driving while impaired may result in a traffic stop, and the driver would be subject to the pains and penalties of driving under the influence laws. I don't know, I haven't said that right, but Patty is getting ready for a trial, so she was unable to wordsmith some of these things for me, so this is just my rough approximation. And as I say, I would then, the number of emergency appointments that were given out, and the hardship cases that needed to receive their amount onsite, full amount onsite over two ounces. Both of those I would include in the reporting that they have to do to us, so that we would know.
So, I want to start by echoing Chairman Moschinsky's comments, that this is the first time that we, as a board, have licensed this type of establishment. It's the first time that I've done it as an individual. So, I've got a lot of questions, and I actually look forward to the dialogue that's going to take place over the next couple of weeks, couple of months, as we learn more about the operations that NEDA is proposing to carry out, how it's going to impact the town. You know, I've got a lot of questions, and hopefully, there'll be a lot of answers given. And I'm going to go where the answers lead me. So, with that, I want to ask some questions about marijuana-infused products, I think otherwise known as edibles. I'm curious to know whether the Licensing Bylaw Review Committee took up that issue. I found in the proposed conditions that, one place where they seem to be mentioned, and that's in the second Condition 18 about the labeling requirements, but was there a broader discussion at the committee level about those issues?
I'm sorry that Dr. Balsam couldn't be here tonight, because he would be a valuable person for you to ask more about. There wasn't, as I recall, there wasn't any committee-wide discussion of this, but rather, there were some side discussions. I have had them with Dr. Balsam, former Chairman DeWitt had them with Dr. Balsam. And I think that helped shape some of the thinking by committee members. And I believe there was some discussion about edibles and how they could have certain treatment, offer certain treatment approaches for certain kinds of maladies that other delivery methods don't provide. But I'm just not, I don't, I don't have sufficient medical information to be able to-
So, I guess I look forward to a conversation with Dr. Balsam and the applicant about, you know, medical marijuana-infused products and their therapeutic functionality or purpose. I'll disclose, I've got some questions about the sale of edibles and, from a public safety perspective. You know, I'm a little bit concerned that infused products, I think the applicant in their application mentioned their intention or their desire to sell brownies and some other food-type products. And I'm concerned that they might be mistaken for non-infused products by somebody who could either overdose, or who could consume an infused product without knowing that it's an infused product.
Like children.
Or children, as well. And again, I'm looking to sort of understand the therapeutic rationale for the sale of infused products, and want to understand what medical purpose the sale of brownies and cookies and lollipops and whatever else that the applicant's going to propose, that aren't traditional mechanisms of delivery of a medication in the classic sense. So, looking forward to that conversation playing out and having some of my questions answered.
We have a lot to learn. Can I ask, I see Superintendent Morgan is here, and one of my concerns about the 10 ounces of medical, people picking up 10 ounces onsite, of course, is a concern about diversion, reselling to, you know, people who don't have a prescription or something like that. It seems, 10 ounces seems like an awful lot to me, and that's why I was suggesting we limit it. I don't, do you have any concerns in that area, and what, do you know anything about that?
Mark Morgan, Superintendent Police. 10 ounces is a lot of marijuana, but as far as, it's how, their dosage is like a medication, as far as if somebody was on OxyContin and they're prescribed by their doctor, they're not going to be, you know, legitimate doctors are not going to over-prescribe the quantity and the doses and how many times you should take it. The 10 ounces also is, as far as, if just raw product, is a lot, as far as, you talk about smoking, but to get into the infused products, they need 10 ounces to make, you know, a different dosage. So, it's not the same, if you, Dr. Balsam is here to tell you, or the representative from NEDA, that it's different than the diet product. Diet products, for 10 ounces is a lot, has a lot of smoking over that period of time. But if that's what their doctor is going to prescribe, that's what we have to deal with. As far as any diversion of the product, if somebody diverts the product, they commit a crime, or they commit a felony, they'd be prosecuted and arrested for possession with the intent to distribute marijuana. So, the criminal penalties come back into play, and also, they'd lose their prescription, they'd lose their ability to keep on getting their medical marijuana that they were awarded the prescription for to begin with. That answers your question.
Yeah, well, of course, we know a lot of OxyContin pills are resold, so, I mean, that's kind of my point. If you give somebody a lot of this stuff, you know, that may be more likely to happen.
It's a, please, upon, host.
While this is the first of this kind of license in Brookline, this is not the first of this kind of license in the Commonwealth. So, have we done a survey of some of the other communities that have been at this? I think, you know, Salem, Brockton-
Northampton.
Northampton, Taunton, I hear.
Salem.
They're not open, so.
Burlington?
Burlington, no, they're not open yet.
I believe it's the only, only the three.
So, are there, are there lessons to be learned from those communities that have gone before us that we can learn from?
Superintendent Morgan, again, from Brookline, please. I did go out to Salem, I met with Captain Stevens of the Salem Police Department, went to the dispensary. From their information, since they've been up and running, they have not had any issues pertaining to their facility. Their facility is located in a, it was classified as an industrial section of town. It's not in their main area, Brookline Village, but based on their demand, which they had a high demand, they've actually, they had to close down because they ran out of product for a period of time, and they're still not onsite, where their growth is somewhere, somewhere else. But they've had no issues as far, the only difference is, in Salem, they did enact a bylaw of no public smoking in, within the city of Salem, so there's a separate repercussion. But under the medical marijuana law, is, public smoking of marijuana is not allowed anyways. So, it's, you get prosecuted, they go back to make a civil offense, it was less than $1, if they possessed that, so. But as far as the Salem, so far, we've had no incidents, no arrests out of there, no instances whatsoever, so.
I did, I did hear a radio program not too long ago, that I believe was about the Salem location, though, and they were discovering that there was one or two doctors that people got sent to who would kind of give out the prescription for any reason whatsoever, you know, any pains or people talked about, and which I think resulted in a lot of traffic to the facility. And that is, you know, certainly caused for some concern.
I don't know if, yeah, I had some very specific kinds of questions that I don't know if I want to raise at this point. Maybe, maybe we'll just post them as part of, you know, the package for the public to respond to. You know, very technical kinds of things, so for example, well, I guess I'm going to raise them. In what's classified, what's in here as Condition 35, where the- In what's classified, what's in here as Condition 35, where the applicant, the licensee is required to notify us of certain things, including cease and desist orders, quarantine orders, suspension orders, blah, blah, blah. It's limited to the licensee, yet we regulate managers and assistant managers and executives and key holders, and I would want that that section also, if we can, also apply to all those other individuals that we regulate. So if, so if any one of those people, if any one of those named people get a cease and desist order, they would have to notify us, not just the licensee.
Yeah, that seems like a straightforward proposal.
Something interesting, this is, this entity operates in kind of a legal, interesting legal environment where it's in compliance with the state and local law, yet not in compliance with federal law, and a change of federal administration could change the enforcement posture of the Department of Justice. And so that's just a statement, but I think by having language such as suggesting would just make sure that if there are any impacts of such a change, that we'd be notified, no matter at what level that affects itself. But another piece of that is the fact that there have been, it's been reported in the press, whether, though I understand that this particular licensee applicant has found a bank with which to, that'll take credit cards, there could be a change in the posture by the bank regulators with a change of administrations where credit cards wouldn't be accepted while these transactions are in violation of federal law. So I would want a notification that if this entity is converting to a completely cash basis, that they can no longer take credit cards, that we'd be notified, because that really affects our security posture. Does that sound like something we could do?
Yes, I believe so.
Yeah, okay. Any other kinds of little things anyone wants to raise? So, you know, I guess, you know, we're going to be having one or more public hearings. We have a lot on our plate right now, and I don't know if we're in a position to set a date for the public hearing right now. The biggest thing, well, two big things in flux right now is the public process for our ninth school study, and I think we need to see how that plays out a little bit. And also, town meeting coming up in two weeks, also kind of fills our calendar. But, so I'm going to defer setting a hearing for the, setting a date for the hearing.
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
Would you contemplate the public hearing being on this draft or on the draft that includes some of the suggestions that have been made today and that you may have?
They can be in as alternates or something. I think people ought to get to comment on some of our thoughts.
Yeah, and whether you show it as a separate document or as a markup, I think it would be good for the public and the applicant to respond to some of these things, because some of these things might have operational implications, I think we'd want to hear, and we may decide, you know, we'll accept their rationale or we won't, so.
So I would just need to hear from the rest of you if you have any specific suggestions.
Okay, anything else on this topic? So we have board and commission appointments. Mr. Klockner.
Chairman, this evening before you is the appointment of the Park and Recreation Commission. We have two expiring terms of appointment. Both of those incumbents are interested in reappointment, and we have an additional candidate who has submitted their application. So I will, so we're voting for two candidates out of these three applicants, and I will state them in their order, and you can express your support of the candidates to vote for two, please. Antonia Bellada.
Aye.
Aye.
James K. Carroll.
Aye.
Aye.
Harry Chevrat.
Aye.
Okay, so Ms. Bellada and Mr. Carroll will be reappointed for your term expiring in 2018.
Okay, that concludes the Board's Selectman meeting for November 20, November 3rd. Thank you.